Move to wait here because my cough started again.
Ready go there. Following the November twenty second, two thousand twenty-two, the school board meeting. And we'll start with eleven questions.
I believe this is what I have. United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands. Why one nation, and everyone. International law, with what we believe in.
So, quite with that quick roll call. If you're going to that one turn.
Yeah, very good.
There are some way to represent them.
They were sent district five.
And the more.
Carly Hoover, District One.
And of course, our superintendent, Dr. Herman, is here. Welcome to everybody who's joining us tonight on this story night. If you're going to start with the welcome message.
Sure.
Can bring it up, there is.
When we come together, we remember that we have committed to work together. With these agreements that we stay engaged, that we experience this comfort and that we are vulnerable. That we speak our truth and that we expect and accept non closure. And the land acknowledgement, I think especially this week, it's most important to remember whose land we walk on. We tended and care and fish these rivers and care for the land we planted and through their families and communities here. On this land, and we remember that many of them are still not recognized.
Thank you, Secretary Bullock. Can you get a motion to put the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approved the agenda, or may I say, I.
I.
You posed. That is unanimously. Now we go to public comments, so there's a couple ways people can submit public comment, they can send. Twenty hours advance, written copy through email, or you can raise your hand or put in the chat that you'd like to. Do it here. Anybody? If you did get one written. Permission, did they want to? Have it read, or did they want to?
And if you not have seen it, someone needs to read it.
That they would read it. So, Ms. Huggins, you wanna? Yeah.
Can you hear me all right?
Good, please go ahead.
All right. Dear Tukwila School Board. We, the staff at. We, the staff at C V would like to respond to the public statements made at the board meeting on October twenty-fifth about Cascade View. We love Cascade View, we love our students and our families. You will not find a school like the community that is Cascade View. It is an honor and a privilege to teach here. We are surprised by what was said here last month. What was publicly said has hurt us deeply and made us wary of responding to the claims. We strive every day to do the best we can for our students with the resources that we have. Over the last five years, under our present leadership, we have tried to work with our building leadership. We have opened our doors and hearts and tried to find ways to make our school the best environment it can be. Despite the comments made on October twenty-fifth, we are still willing to work with our building admin team. Upon seeing the public recording, many staff members did not know that the speakers felt this way. It leaves us wondering why it wasn't brought up to the staff. Instead, we are left feeling embarrassed that our workplace environment is publicly being portrayed in this light. We feel what was said is inaccurate and taken out of context. Ultimately, the students and families suffer the most. Imagine what it is like for parents to hear these comments and then have to send their students to school the following day. We would like the opportunity to show the board what rapport and community is truly like at Cascade View. Cascade View is full of imaginative, supportive, creative staff and students. We show up every day for each other and for our students. We would greatly appreciate the opportunity to come together to do restorative work. To regain the necessary understanding between the staff and our administration. What type of process can we establish to repair harm, support our students, and let all staff feel like their voice is truly heard? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Are there any other? Okay. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting as well, so. Proceed on to the student representatives' report.
Yes, okay. So, on Thursday, from Thursday till Saturday, I was at Wasta, which is the annual school board conference. With the majority of the school board, and. There was a lot of different sessions that included a lot of different learnings from different school boards. Let's see, and there was a lot of talk about equity. It's a lot of different ways that different school boards have come, have worked, and then they did their presentation and how they. Develop their own kind of method into ensuring equity within their school board, so I guess. One thing that I could do is I'm, I'm gonna try to bring this to our high schools, raise an equity meetings and just see if it might be of use to them. Which we could also implement it into our equity, our race and equity toolkit as well. And there was also a lot of talk about how we could utilize student voices, so. I'm gonna say this here now, so I'm actually gonna do it later, just to keep myself accountable, but. I, I do, I think that I'm gonna try to be more involved in the. In the other schools, the high schools, so something that other schools have done is, you know, they go to the different schools and just talk to the students and see how. Those schools are doing, so that is something I'm also gonna try to do, and the school board also has expressed interest in also doing that, so we really do wanna. Work with, work well with our students and see their perspectives. We also do want to empower student voices more than just the student representative positions, we also wanna include. Other high schools, student voices, that might not be like the perfect picture students, and we also wanna move down to the middle school and elementary school. Level and include those voices as well in leadership positions. Yeah.
Thank you. Superintendent, Dr. Herman.
Yes, thank you, I too was at the Wasta Conference and stuff then. Last weekend, over the weekend, I really appreciated the opportunity, those kind of conferences I usually get quite a bit out of. In this case, it was really interesting and I appreciated the number of student board representatives who were there. I think they said there are about eighty-eight were in attendance. And that this was the largest school director's attendance at the conference that they've had, that they know of, there's a lot of people. They'd also talked about the number of school boards who now have student representatives is up to about forty-five percent of all school districts, so that's. Have a great growing trend, it's not. Something that school boards have to do, but it's just something that's been growing, and it is great, and. Having one of our student representatives there was, was a benefit, I think, to all of us and. To see the other student representatives that were there, I think all those student representatives, so I had several in sessions there. It's really good to hear their perspectives and their comments that they had. I also enjoyed the general session speakers, I thought their insights were thoughtful and informative and entertaining. They had a couple of keynote people as well as Tim Garcha, who's the executive director of Wasta, and. Chris Brechtal, who is the state superintendent, so they answered a couple of questions that were posed. Although not all of the questions that were posed, there were a lot that were sent in and they didn't get it. I attended several sessions, some of which I saw other board directors, and I went to the Making Suicide Prevention More Culturally Responsive, which I thought. Was interesting work being done even within our own E S D, which was led there. A universal screener for how incapable students, which is something that we've talked about before. Just to see what others' districts were using and how and when they implement that. Went to a session on high impact tutoring, just looking how tutoring could be used in different settings and multiple mediums. I attended an inclusion instruction on co-teaching, and while that session was focused on special education, I think it's. Something that could be applicable as we're looking at co-teaching situations and models. And then the last session I attended was on using data and analytics to inform and allocate impact performance, so that's using a. Data tool that pulls from other data sources, which I thought was also pretty good. Could be something that could be beneficial to touch on, so. I really enjoyed all those sessions, I thought they were informative and very look forward to having more conversation about.
Thank you, you wanna do, let's see, who's gonna do the COVID nineteen?
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. So, in terms of COVID report, we've been seeing an increase in cases in the last two weeks. This might be expect, like, there's also been an increase in R S V as well as flu cases. I don't, there are no updates in terms of any new D O H guidance. So it's a fairly short update, but I'll be sending out communication to families and staff tomorrow, just to go over. Kind of how to keep yourself safe with the upcoming holiday season or holiday weekend that we're having.
Any, any questions for? No, same then. But to director's report. And if you're bothered, definitely.
Sure. Well, the first way to protect yourself is to not feed your grandchildren. They got me sick two weeks ago while I was visiting them. Caused me to miss the Wasta conference, which I'm really sad about, it's a great community builder as well, informative. So I don't have a report from that, well, I wish I had been there. But I, I can tell you that next week on Wednesday, November thirtieth. Five of our kiddos will move into tiny homes, from tents or sunny schoolrooms or back rooms. These are five besting view kids that are pretty excited to have their own better. That would be my report.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
During these sessions, it reinforced for me how much we're venturing to do. And how many other districts are venturing to do those same things, so. I did gain some thoughts and ideas and strategies. Like how to develop our creative ways to involve others. How to elevate student voices, not only the present voices that we have now, but past. And to give multi-generational voices included. And to develop not only internal but external capacities. There was an interesting conversation held about strategies, strategies to increase diversity and high level classes. Thoughts on how to celebrate our successes. And techniques of having roundtable board meetings. And Dennis brought up a good point, I have never seen anybody near work like that boy does. To create an adult life skills class, perhaps. Programmed by the students and staff that we have. There was also a great conversation about board secretary, how we couldn't survive without them. And someone was talking about avid, and I was wondering if we could get an update about avid, because we haven't heard much about. It lately, and I, it's such a wonderful program to develop our student skills, so it was a great conference.
Thank you, how about, Secretary Hoover, you wanna do?
Yeah, sure, and I wanna first apologize for not being in person and not feeling well, and I didn't wanna. Spread my germs to anyone, so just two quick things aside from the Wasta conference, and then I'll share some reflections from the conference. I had the opportunity, speaking of avid, I had the opportunity to. Join two classes, one yesterday and one today, to hear some of the service learned research projects by some of the avid students. And of course, I'm always impressed by the, just the creativity that folks, that young people have. And the resourcefulness, and so they, they presented some, some of the biggest challenges or the biggest problems that they see here in Tukwila. And some solutions to, to, to help support and fix them. So that was really great, I'm really grateful for, to Mr. Wong for the invitation to that class. Additionally, we had on. Oh gosh, what day was that? I don't even remember the date exactly, but we had our first meeting, our orientation kickoff for the Safety and Inclusion Task Force. One of the, I think, the most. Exciting parts about that particular meeting was looking around the room and realizing that we had. More students represented than we did non-students, and that was, I think, a really powerful thing. And so I'm really excited about just the work that I know Dennis has done to really engage students in this work. And really excited for the voices and the perspective that those folks will bring to the, the task force as a whole. And so, the conference was centered around belonging. And, you know, I know this is something that I, that's a word I use a lot. And have, folks have probably heard it come out of my mouth very often, and so I just wanted to share some things that I wrote down about what belonging is to me. That the, that the conference kind of reinforced a bit, and also just gave me the opportunity to reflect a little bit more. This is certainly not all things that belonging is, but again, just kind of reflecting on my own experience, I just wanted to share this. So first, I wanted to provide a definition of belonging that I really value, and this is borrowed from an individual named Brianna Herman Brand. Belonging is to be positively connected to others and feel an intrinsic part of something bigger than oneself. So here are my reflections on belonging. Belonging is more than just inclusion with a bow. Belonging is when inclusive practices already exist and are not created in response to my existence in that space. Belonging is when my experiences and perspectives are believed. I don't have to defend code switch or keep hidden the messy or different parts of myself. Belonging is my very presence or existence in a space not being questioned. Belonging is raw, vulnerable connection, the ability to show up as my full self and in my uniqueness. And that uniqueness is recognized and celebrated. Belonging leaves space for conflict, accountability, and healing. Belonging is being willing to be present with others, to see them, and allow yourself to be seen and known. Belonging is connection to self, to community, to story, and to history. Belonging is, is action, it's messy, complex, painful, rewarding, life-giving, and necessary. So, I, you know, I think there is so much work we can continue to do as we think about how we can create. Environments in our schools and not just in our schools, but in our district and our community as a whole around belonging, and I think one of the. Something that really stuck out to me really on the first day was this idea of. Really trying to get an understanding of where belonging is already happening, because it's happening in our district. It's happening, and so how can we lean in and really identify where are those places where our students, where our staff. Feel that sense of longing and connectedness, and how can we really strengthen those while also building bridges across groups and, and. Clubs to create a, 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 a community, a district community of belonging. So aside from some of that fluffy stuff, a few things that, that I, that I took away that I really want to explore as a board and, and with Dr. Herndon. One thing that I. You know, the, the biggest thing I think, what, I guess, two, two main takeaways. One was the work that I know I need to lean into more around how we're effectively partnering. As a, as a board team of six, and, you know, hearing a, a lot of the times in some of these sessions, you see superintendents. And a board member give these joint presentations and really talk about ways in which they are, are just really working. In tandem with each other, you know, having hard conversations, but also really, really pushing the way forward, and I think. We've, I, you know, I, I'm, I, I hope, and I think that in ways we've started, we, we've done, we're doing that, but I think there are so many ways in which we could. Just strengthen that connectedness and the work that we're doing collaboratively and the partnership. The active partnership between the board and the superintendent and your team. I think two, two other things that stuck with me, Dennis already spoke to a little bit about the youth voice, and I wanna just celebrate. Also that I think there are so many ways in which we are doing that really well, not just based on the representation. And having, you know, Dennis and Sam in these meetings and actively engaging their voice. But also in ways that we are collecting, excuse me, but also collecting and really ensuring that student voices are present. And as Dennis mentioned, you know, my, my hope is to really figure out how we are engaging student voice at all levels of our system, not just at the high school. And then, and, and at the middle school where I think those, it's more, I think easier, feels easier in some ways. To really include their voice, but I really wanna figure out ways that we can establish that across our system. And then the other piece that really is sitting with me on the second day, no, sorry, it's the first day. The keynote speaker was the Teacher of the Year and. He, he spoke about the Native Studies Program that he has instituted in partnership, of course, with the district in Thurston County, and. I had the opportunity to go to the, kind of to continue the conversation session, and the, like, there were so many takeaways from that, but I think the biggest thing is. I wanna figure out ways that we can strengthen the partnership with the Duamish here in Tukwila. And, you know, I know that, Dr. Herndon, you meet with, with folks from the tribe regularly leadership, but I would like, I would love the opportunity to figure out how we. Can just be more. I don't know, I wanna strengthen the partnership and, and figure out ways that, you know, we can really lead and move with. Hello, just a stronger sense of, of connection to, to the Duamish, so that was a big take with me, I don't know really exactly where to start with that. But I'm, I'm hopeful that, that there's some steps that we can take, that I can take and, and the board as well. In increasing our, our partnership and collaboration with them, so. Thanks.
Sure, thank you, Director Hoover. I wanted to check, I kind of passed over his Sam, if you know, Steve, I just love. Okay, now, okay, did I wanna make sure we didn't skip over anything? So, for my report, I, a few things, I went. For a visit up to Rainier Prep, which is the charter middle school up in White Center. And it was, they, they did there for actually quite a long time, and they have a really. Their demographics are pretty similar to ours, about eighty percent pre-introduced, seventeen, thirty percent. E L L students, and they had a really good academic record for quite a long time, so I was interested in kind of. You know, what they were doing, and one of the things that they do, pre-mental studies is something that. I guess was interesting, we're talking about co-teaching. So they've been using a co-teaching model where they have, you know, like twenty-eight students in the classroom and two full-time certificate staff in there. So, and it's been quite successful, so it's interesting, it'd be an interesting place if we're. Interested in looking at the co-teaching model in action, that would be an interesting place to go. They also do kind of an interesting thing with their school day, they have longer. A longer school week, although they break it up a little differently, they do it. Monday to Thursday, they have a longer day, and Friday they get out at like one-thirty, so they've adjusted their. School day a little bit, which is interesting. They also do some interesting thing with. How they do interventions, it's a very fluid system, and they're, all the teachers are involved in kind of a group based on, on need and this dynamic throughout the. Throughout the day, they do have combos like we do, and they use a lot of math up there for kind of the. The road learning that needs to go on, and then. At the same time, they're having small groups in the classroom with a couple of certificate teachers in them, so. Anyway, it's an interesting. Place, and if anybody, I'm sure they're, they're always happy to take people through there if anybody's interested in taking a look at that. I did have an interesting, or I had a good call with the head of the healthcare authority regarding. What's called Medicaid reimbursement, and hopefully have a, a meeting to look at, at that, they have, there's some. We haven't, this district hasn't participated in that program for quite a number of years, and that there's quite a few updates apparently since this new person's coming in director, so. Anyway, we'll sit down and kind of go through and see if we can maybe take advantage of that. The other thing I wanna talk about was. There, the League of Education voters have, it's a, an organization, education organization in the area that have. What they call webinars, it's kind of their version of webinars. And they bring on, I was on one, we're talking about funding, there's different, they have all kinds of different subjects, they had recently a really good one. Called Combating Hate in Education, and you can, you can go on the League of Education's website and look at any of these webinars from the past. It was talking, first of all, a couple of interesting things, one is the panelists were Aaron Jones, who was the. Mister the ceremony at our Wasta end of conference and has been, has worked at Fosfo High School before, and is kind of. Becoming a nationwide, she used to be statewide, now she's a nationwide educator recognition. And also elected the move, well, that's who that Fosfo High School was, actually she's been running start this year, senior, but. And so I really recommend this program because they were talking about a lot of the types of issues that are gonna be coming up around. You know, critical race theory and, and, you know, parent involvement in classrooms and. You know, all the things that you kind of see going on in the, in the news today, and they addressed them, you know, pretty good on. And so I would highly recommend that you take a look at that. To get educated on a lot of those issues. In terms of the annual conference. Several things, I attended a few sessions on, or a couple of sessions on strategic planning, one given by Everett and. Another one given by Pasco. And it's interesting to look at the, the benchmarks that pretty much everybody's using, third grade reading. Which is what you've got in our list, and also some form of math and also. Some form of social emotional learning is a big, is a big commonality between the different groups. One of the most interesting sessions for me was given by Tulsa, and they're talking about. And several of us are talking about student boarding, they have a really interesting, which I'd love to try, and they. and several of us talked about student boarding. They have a really interesting, which I'd love to try, and they call them school tours. And what happened is that two board members and some people from the cabinet go to each school and they go during lunchtime. So they first of all, sit down and have the lunch that's served to all the students. And then afterwards, they ask the principal there to select about ten students representing all different aspects of the student. And they sit down for, for an hour, I think, and they have basically the same set of questions to each group. And basically, what is working well? What do you wish were different? Is there, was some aspect of our culture that is unfair? What might that be? And is there a question you're not asking? So it's, they got some, they get some really interesting responses. So the way of I think we should think about that. I mean, we kind of go to schools with a board meeting thing and get the formal presentation, but this this approach is, you know, it gets, it gets deeper into the school than it's actually talking to, you know, like how you involve more students and just just the AFD or, you know, those kinds of things. As a matter of fact, they specifically, when they asked principals, they said, you know, give us a little handout status to and students that may not be doing all those activities. And so anyway, I thought it was a really interesting way to approach it. Yeah, I did sit down, I sat down with our, one of our representatives, Steve Burquist, to talk about the funding system. He, he's still not committal, but anyway, I gave him an earful about the funding system and how it's not equitable. So it would be interesting to see what happens with that this year. Also went to the Equity and Education Conference, which, and that's down in Tacoma and the leader of that organization, Sherona, is she's been working on this funding issue for quite a long time. So we actually had a nice conversation with Michael Ferrer and a member who was on the state board of directors, Terry Martin Norris, strategizing about how we could you know, move some of this stuff along in the legislature. So that's my report. And take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Remove the second, the consent agenda being approved. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. And I was sort of going down through the through the question, presentations. Does anybody have, are there any questions on the financial forecast, I guess? I don't know, is there a CFO here?
She's on.
Oh, she's online. Okay. So I guess the first question for the, on this one is I'm trying to figure out, so we lost, yeah, one point nine million came off our fund balance. And I'm trying to get a feel for, you know, some of it was revenues being reduced, which I assume was probably because of reduced enrollment count. And question, is that correct? And then I'm, what I'm really interested in probably more is which expenditures, do you have an idea of how much of this was revenue and how much was expenditure?
So, good evening, everyone. So to answer your first question, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay. So that's the revenue part, yeah.
Okay, yes, the revenue reduction is directly related to our decrease in enrollment. And basically, the one point nine million that I show as a reduction is pretty much just the simple calculation of where we expect to spend our dollars as well as what we intend to receive in revenue. And another thing to just keep in mind is that this is the beginning of our new bargaining agreement. And so we knew that there were going to be some costs associated with that. As we move through that, as we move through the year, as everyone is aware, that number, as far as any fund balance may change based on our expenditures and our revenues. But looking at that ending fund balance, I am working really hard with all the departments and just making sure that we are being very fiscally responsible with our dollars because that ending fund balance is not, it's not sustainable.
Okay, so the, sounds like the the line share that one point nine has to do with enrollment and and the new bargaining agreement?
Yes, in a, yes, in addition to what we currently plan to budget for the twenty two, twenty three school year with expenditures as well as the associated revenue.
Okay, so that just kind of tells us that, as you say, you have to work on reducing expenditures throughout the rest of the year.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions on? There's only a question on this one. We'll go to the, the WEDA. Which is the new test for NLLVLO students. Any questions on that one? So this is the first year of the WEDA. And so you know, one of the things I'm always interested in is what's the growth rate? And since we don't have to grow, you need, you need to, you need two data points for growth. So these, I'll be interested to see the proficiency numbers based on the old test. I think when I was looking back, they were typically you know, fourteen, fifteen percent a year. And so I, I've heard that the WEDA is harder, kind of like the SBA. So I guess I shouldn't be surprised that the numbers are a little lower, but I'll be interested to see what the, what the state pass rate is when they, when the FIA comes out with that. Also, yeah, I really want to make sure that we get some good you're thinking about next year when we have the second test to see if we have some good measures of of growth. Because that's really the key to getting students out of. I mean, we know, when I looked at the past, particularly, mostly we have all, I think too many students that are long-term yellow students that have been in the program for like five years. And so the key obviously to getting them out is to grow them as quickly as possible. So anyway, forward to that. Next to okay. Any questions on graduation rates? First thing I wanted to do on this one was to celebrate, first of all, this eighty seven percent graduation rate. That's the highest graduation rate in fifteen years that I've been here. So that, you know, the, the students, the families, the staff should be congratulated on getting that high graduation rate, definitely the highest we've ever had before. Though, the one, one thing I, I always track on graduation rates is the racial gap. And you know, in our district, and I'm going back, you know, ten years now, there's never been, unlike our test scores, which have a clear gap between white Asian students and Black Latinx, it's a guy later, and the American students, those gaps are there every year and have been for a long time. Graduation rates, that doesn't exist. They're just kind of all over the place. Which is good. And it's, since it's been an upward trend, that's also good. However, when I noticed in one year, does not make a trend, but I noticed this year, you know, the top graduation rates are two races, whites and Asian students. And then Black and Latinx students are are below there. So I don't know whether, I'll have to watch that next year because I don't know with, you know, there's some COVID impact disproportionality is there. But anyway, we'll need to, I want to keep, keep watching that for next year because and be thinking about, are there some some reason why the Black and Latinx students are graduating at a lower rate? Need to kind of put that out. The other thing I was, I would like to see on this. And I guess we'll have to go just look at it. But we're talking about ADIS, ADIS, you know, and you're right, because we've never, we've not had a report in a long time. I know our students, you know, a number of years ago, we had the ADIS teachers, and students come in and seeing the praises of the program, it was really important to them. And so one of the measures, you know, I think we should be looking at is the graduation rate. I suspect that it's quite high, but I've never seen the, the report. So yeah, you know, and if it's, if it's what I expected is, that is quite higher, then the question becomes, well, why don't we have more students? So anyway, I think that, it'll hopefully, our data group will be able to pull back with a, so the other program, you know, there's that we can use graduation rates for is, which is another one I suspect is going to be interesting. So in every year, we started the world language competency program. So a number of our students, you know, are able to get I mean, our student rep over here happens to be one of them. Got four credits and gets a visa in the case. And I think that program, what I've kind of observed over the years is that that since it's available, it motivates students to, you know, stay connected to their heritage language and which can bring in all kinds of good study habits and motivation. So I'm really interested to see, I suspect another one, the graduation rate of this group. These are people who are beginning to see a lot of literacy, it is probably quite high. And so I think that, that's something that, and and I also think our graduation rate for this year, you know, we need to be publicizing this stuff. I know other districts almost immediately when they figure out they have a high graduation rate will splur out over the social media and wherever. So I, we, I don't think we've ever done that, but I think we need to for sure celebrate and let everybody know that you know, we have, we have a really successful graduation rate. And it's interesting that our, so there's three aspects to graduate in the year, to graduate, you drop out, or you continue. And our continuing rate is continuing to go down, no pun intended. Which is good as long as our graduation rate is going up because I mean, we're getting more students graduated in four years, which is great. And but at the same time, we need to not forget about the dropout students. And and we did, we did see that our special education students, they're dropping out at a fairly high rate. So that's another area we need to pay attention to. So anyway, those are yeah, just those are more comments than questions that I think, think we do need to look at. And but I hopefully, we can't celebrate the the VSE, like I said, it's the highest in fifteen years. So Vaughn, I don't know, is there any other comments on? No.
Go ahead.
A quick question.
Yeah.
For the graduation rate, I was just wondering if we might know why dropout rate for Latinx student was tripled last year? Who am I supposed to be asking that to? Okay. I saw that the Latinx, the number of Latinx students that dropped out last year is that it was tripled. Do we know why that might be?
We don't know at this time, but I can certainly get back to you.
And how are students right now, seniors right now that are not being currently on track to graduating, being supported besides like family liaisons?
That was part of it. And then the other part is working with the need counselors in terms of looking at our E-words, our early warning indicators in the system. For all students.
So early warning areas, I think like attendance, discipline, you know, things that we probably share your back there, things like that, that would say, oh, what's going on here?
And as the freshman academy, it looks pretty interesting. Could you like give an overview of that, like what that would look like and when that might come into play?
So the freshman academy is I, I will talk about it in terms of ambition. And then the goal is to work with staff, student information from true. The freshman academy will be something that our incoming freshmen would be able to attend and earn credits prior to getting into the high school. And that way it would put them ahead the credit that they would need to receive.
Thank you.
Actually, did have one other thing on the, the graduation. So the other thing that's gone on during COVID is what they call diversity graduation credit waivers. And we've never seen a report on that. The, the Roma Project did a study on that and found out, so this is where you know, because of COVID and the disruption in the regular schedule, students could get maybe a waiver of, you know, having some number of credits or some courses if they, you know, it was due to the fact that school was discontinued and they just didn't have the opportunity to do that. The problem is, when the Roma Project was looking at it, it was, of course, disproportionately after, you know, the Black and Latinx students then low again. So the question for, for me is, is, and particularly when you're waiving some portion of a core course, like English language or math or something. The problem is, then if you just go ahead and graduate, then the student may not be prepared well for their college experience. And so I would be, that's another one, I guess, for the data group, that it would be good to know the Roma Project, just they didn't pull it down to the, to the district level, they just did it at the, at the area level. But there is, you know, a lot, a good number of students that were getting waivers for in particular, English language. And so that's you know, the reason, and I think these waivers, my understanding, they were making to do them for the next two years. And so the question becomes, if we have a student who may be, you know, needing to get that waiver, it seems like, I mean, we should do things like use extra dollars to get them a personal waiver. You know, I mean, we have that for the next several years. So anyway, there's, we yeah, I think we need to really make sure we aren't giving waivers and then just, you know, so they weren't prepared for the next, their next you know, college or whatever. So anyway, I'd be interested to know how many, you know, how many waivers we're giving away in the last couple of years and then in what, and how many of them were in force. I'm not so worried about, you know, there's a favorite P credit. You can waive that, but you know, for the core ones, those are the ones that are really, and and make sure that we're you know, giving those students as much, you know, benefit as we possibly can for them to make it up in some way.
Now, we saw that we didn't forget.
Yeah.
In terms of the E-words.
Yeah, 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 that'd be good. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, Vaughn and wherever you have.
What's up? What's up, babes?
I guess a question on the how, do we have any better data on the Shaw the kitchen project? So we had actually three projects that we could use potentially some dollars that weren't spent on foster and all the other projects. And one was remodeling the path performing arts center. The other was putting the, the new remodel, kitchen remodel in Cholter, which is our central kitchen and everything goes on. And then another was a walking path for the community. And it sounds like we've determined based on the amount of money left, that there's not enough money for the walking path. So, okay, and so the kitchen remodel is going on.
The remodel is going on, and it's a priority for this, for the school. Obviously, that's our main feature. So
Question is, do we have, I mean, I would say the plan, I think we now see there's like one point five million for that. Is that going to be sufficient?
I believe so. We will have more data coming up with us, coming up next week. Just for the construction part of it, we will have, and I will share that information.
And then the question is, potentially at that point, whatever's left over would be used for the vacuum model.
Correct.
Which yeah, I'm interested, and you said that, because we're talking about lighting system, sound system and seating.
Right. So, so the idea is, the idea that we have in place is that we need to focus on that, on the kitchen. Once the kitchen is completed, and we go Once the kitchen is completed and we go into a bit for the kitchen, we actually we know exactly how much, how much we're going to spend on it. So whatever is left over from that, we're going to be using the money for the, for the packer money with the idea that where, when we go for big, if we go for big with a packer modeling, we're going to have, we're going to have items in there. We're going to have to divide what we're going to spend on lighting and reading, how much we're going to spend on, depending on how much that is the cost of how much left over we have. We're going to have to go by, by safety and security first, which I believe that they put on, and really is most important than than the, the seating on the, on, in there. But there is, there is, there is that plan in there. But number one would be the kitchen, after the kitchen, we need to figure out what hours we can do from that, from the month.
Okay, I hope you have, yeah, some, some opportunity once that is, once we have.
So what I provided in there is information, how many things it's going to cost.
Yeah.
We haven't allocated any budget to the path because we don't know how much, we're going to spend. I mean, that's assuming, just.
So the number you have, what does, guess right now is that we've done like 297,000, $200,000 short, which, so I'm going to be working with Representative Hacking, office. Is the, maybe we can get some money from.
Some money, yeah.
The state, the state always likes to fund portions of things, not the entirety, but it sounds like that could be an ideal.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
That would be wonderful, wonderful. Also, I didn't also provided the budget to the CEO of Toquilla, how much.
Yeah.
Is a council member in Verna.
Verna Seal?
Verna Seal. Also, she's in the Arts Commission.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So I go back and talk to that. And, you know, together with Cindy Chesek, and Inkey Estes, I believe is his last name, I'm sorry if I, I'm, don't say it right. And they're going to try to go to the representative also, Mr. Smith, maybe his name, to try to go with my class.
Oh, that's the federal, Adam Smith, that's a federal.
Yeah, so that's what they're trying to, to do also to help.
Okay, so, yeah, as soon as you know, get the kitchen number finalized, it'd be good to know exactly how much.
Yeah. So that was my intention, to provide what we have right now, how much we think is going to cost. But with that intention that that may change depending on the, on the needs.
So I think in the state thing, the forum is probably going to ask, you know, how much does it cost? So, I mean, this is just estimates, you know, kind of thing.
Yeah.
So like $2 million or something like that.
So with that said, then the, the community walk is not, we're going to be, we're not going to. It's not as important as that.
Oh, the walking path, okay.
The walking path.
But in theory, if the state brought up a lot of money for the path, then maybe there's enough.
Maybe there's.
Yeah. Depends on how much.
We're going to have to talk to Veronica about that.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, we don't have no idea what the state is and how much they want. Okay.
Just real quick, the down system at Shawalter, I understand is lacking. Is there, I guess like graduation, nobody could hear, and that's been a continual problem. Is there any potential?
For graduation, they went backward. It's not the supposed to.
Well, we had a community meeting and it was hard to hear.
Also, those are all things that we look at. I mean, we can price out various projects.
Okay.
Oh. Yeah, I, I know that Pavings, a big remodeling, it was not down during construction for one of the reasons.
And that Shawalter.
Oh, you're talking about Shawalter?
No, I, I Shawalter, I just keep hearing this concern about the sound system products.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't listened to that one. I don't have a problem at all. That kind of comes out of nowhere, the name is such.
Okay, so thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, just wanted to jump in and I, I won't necessarily need them here, but I, there are a few things that are on my mind that I'd love to connect Lilyana and Dr. Hernan with you both about, some projects. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for this. I really appreciated this report, the narrative around the timeline and the barriers and the everything. I, I just really appreciated the way that it was delivered and then the bullet points as well were also was so helpful. So thank you for the, this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything on the enrollment report?
I do have one thing, just kind of want to, this ties into budget, of course. But come back to the question that I posed before around, kind of when, when is the work going to kind of be started? And maybe it has already around kind of strategizing for how we're going to actively increase enrollment.
Yeah, I think we've been having some conversations about strategies that we have. And we'll continue that over the next couple of months as we're getting things underway. We do an initial enrollment forecast also, probably around the end of January, February is what we're looking at. So those are certainly things that, that we look at, some of the projections and trends that we've seen within our enrollment, as well as within the area, the region, to kind of see what's happening. So I'm happy to, happy to fill you in as we continue to do that work.
Okay, that sounds great. I'm also wondering if, maybe hearing that kind of January is when some of those reports are done, maybe we could do a work session or, and/or get, you know, maybe in March, kind of a plan, proposed kind of action oriented plan about what, what, what strategies we're going to try. But we can add those to the list here.
Okay, is there nothing else on the enrollment report, monthly budget status report? The three of them? Okay, nothing on that. Anything on the updated technology plan?
I guess I have one question. And I did not send this in and I should have, I apologize for that. Where are we in getting hotspots for our kiddos that might need extra work at home? Either do a language or, yeah, I know it has a, you have to have a contract with a carrier. So are we either having a carrier or how's that going to work?
Dr. Bow, Director Bowlerjack, this is Mr. Baker. These conversations are taking place right now with my department. We did have hotspots available earlier in the year and Chromebooks for students that were out on quarantine. And now we're going to, we're talking about transitioning to offering hotspots and Chromebooks to students who do need a little bit of extra intervention at home. As you stated, we do need to work with a carrier on that. And those are some of the conversations that we're having right now.
So do you have a timeline or anything?
I don't have an exact timeline at this time, but we do have a carrier that we've been working with. And so it's a matter of reaching out to them and talking to them about their timeline.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, budget plan. Now moving into action items. So we will need a motion to approve Resolution Number 926, certification of 2023 property taxes. And moving in second, then we approve Regulation 926. Are there any questions, questions? I guess this is going to be for Chief Financial Officer. So do we have this, do we have this rollback, is that in our budget? Or is that going to be something that we'll need to come out later?
So I originally projected the original rollback, which was close to almost half a million dollars. And so, yes, that is part of the budget that was brought forth to approval at the end of August. So yes, that expectation of that rollback is in the budget. If the rollback happens to be less than that, then that works in our favor.
Yeah, based on, since it's, it's based on our enrollment. And our enrollment is now slightly less than the budgeted enrollment?
Uh, yes, but this is actually the last year, 22, 23 is actually the last year that we have. I'm, I'm trying to think of the word, the, not grandfather, but we're able to get the higher of the two years with the enrollment.
Yeah, the whole, the whole harmless.
Both harmless, there we go, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay. Okay. Do they have any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, you know? That resolution is approved. Now we'll go, is anybody else who wants to do any other comment? An opportunity to either put it in the chat or use the raise hand function in Zoom, if you'd like to make any comments. Okay. Seeing none. Take the motion to adjourn. And moving second, we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
Have a great holiday weekend, everyone.